Pledge to the flag. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. First on our agenda is public hearing. It's council's intention to adopt an ordinance vacating a 20-foot by 65-foot waterline easement at 100 New River Road, tax parcel 435A41. Of course, we all know that is the belt department store and the renovation there. And Mr. Helms, if you could explain what it is we have to move the fire hydrant, I believe?
There was an easement for a fire hydrant, and with the new expansion, the over where the fire hydrant was, we've moved the fire hydrant already, but so the easement won't be under their building. We'd like to vacate the easement. We don't need it anymore.
Those require a public hearing, so is there anyone here who would like to speak to this intention to adopt the ordinance? There's no one to speak, then we'll close the public hearing and move on. The town council is now in session. You have before you the minutes of the last meeting. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes?
Will we approve?
Second. Motion of the second to approve the minutes of the last meeting discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Minutes are adopted. Thank you. And at this time, we'd like to introduce Mr. Brad Epperaly, Director of Parks and Recreation. And Mr. Barber, why don't you introduce Brad?
I believe you just did. It's an honor, kind of double honor tonight, Brad, because we, Brad recently came on board with us. He is a semi-local kind of boy, lives down in Blacksburg, but he has an extensive background in recreation. He spent years, I believe, even at the, on the park level as a park ranger or park guard or something, park ranger, park guard. He worked for several years in Salem, was very active with the Boyer Sports Complex, from supervising it coming all the way up to any, I think, any event they had in Salem over about a five-year span, Brad was involved in it pretty much. He left Salem, went to Radford University, and was a facility manager of the Dedman Center. Is that pretty close to it?
Southern Gulf Athletics.
Oh, athletics. He even had to, he even had to watch the papers and the players. Without further ado, I'm going to introduce Brad Epperaly. And Brad, give us a little detail. I'll talk to this man.
I will. Thank you, appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you, Mike. Just want to say, first of all, thank you for the opportunity. Look forward to, I've been involved with a lot of athletics, a lot of parks, a lot of different items in the recreation world, and also a lot of different things with college events and special events, and looking forward to take what's here in Christiansburg and maintain what's been in the past and move forward. Christiansburg's a town of growth, and I look forward to put my heart and soul into this and making Christiansburg the best that it can be to where we can provide the citizens good customer service, good recreational opportunities, and to be able to make our community a great community.
Welcome aboard, Brad. We're looking forward to working closely with you. Councilman Barber is our liaison to the Recreation Commission. That was reason I wanted him to introduce Brad, and he has another task to perform this evening, a special recognition.
Thank you, Your Honor. It is just a double pleasure, not only to introduce our new recreation director, but also Art Price. I'm going to ask you and your family to come up, please, if you don't mind. We may have space up here, I think we've got a pretty good crowd with you tonight, but the lady and the girls and the grandkids and all, come on up. Davey, sir, I want you to come up. Oh, they're all getting here. I want to just say, we, it has been a pleasure of mine to work with Art Price, not only the 11 or 12 years that I've been on the Recreation Commission, but I coached Art when, before there was ever a recreation department. Art played for Kualanis Ball, and I ran the Kualanis programs. I've known Art since he was about yay tall. I've watched him grow from a, you know, from a recreation supervisor to leading a very, very large and very, very important department within our town. Our recreation department has come a long way since the days that one would inhabit. We had a rec department and no department, no building, to the old, I guess it's now the restaurant up on top of the Summit Restaurant was the original rec department. We operated out of the armory room, Art, just about everything, every place you'd operate. And about 10, 11, 12 years ago, we built the rec center. And it is a, I'm sure, looking out over the, I'm sure you've all been there. If you haven't, shame on you. It is a beautiful facility, it is well-used, probably averages 11,000 to 12,000 people a month through that participate, whether either participating or whether they're watching sports. But Art has worked for the town for many years. He has retired, effective March 1, and we as a council and we as a town would like to present Art with this, with following proclamation. Whereas the Christiansburg Department of Parks and Recreation was established in the early 1970s to manage the funding, organization, and development of all adult and children's recreation and athletic programs, and whereas Art Price was hired as a supervisor of recreation in 1983 to assist in the development of programs and facilities for the Christiansburg Department of Parks and Recreation, a post he held for four years, and whereas Art Price was promoted to Director of the Christiansburg Department of Parks and Recreation in 1987, and demonstrated excellence in all areas of parks and recreation management, from expanding recreational programming for citizens of all ages and abilities, to tirelessly assisting with the planning and construction of recreational facilities throughout Christiansburg, and whereas Art Price was instrumental in bringing the Dixie Boys World Series to town in 2010, and providing such a hospitable atmosphere for baseball that the Dixie Boys program will return for their Junior World Series in 2012, and whereas Art Price completed 30 years of faithful service to the town of Christiansburg and Virginia until his retirement, effective March 1, 2012, contributing significantly to the betterment of our community and to the town's distinction as a recreation and sporting destination, and whereas the Virginia Parks and Recreation Society has further recognized this commitment by naming Art Price one of their outstanding leaders in the Commonwealth. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed, the Town Council of Christiansburg commends Art Price for his nearly three decades of devotion and for dedication to the Department of Parks and Recreation, and extends our heartfelt best wishes for many years of happy retirement on behalf of the citizens of the town of Christiansburg. Love you, Mr. Beattie.
Love you, brother.
Thank you, Jim.
Good luck.
I think I've known him probably about as long as Mr. Barber has. In fact, I was Art Price's school principal at one time. He was a very well-behaved young man, because I let him know real quickly, I know your Congratulations, Art, and thank you so much.
We thank the town of Christiansburg for the life it gave our family. I tell you once, you did any sporty goods, Dick's sporty goods. I promise you, this counts, but I will promise you that.
Oh goodness, we have a couple other recognitions to make this evening, and I'm going to ask Councilman Henry Showalter if he will read a proclamation or a resolution to several boroughs.
Hi, Mayor. I want to recruit Mr. Hubbard to help me out, since I don't think I have the air to read these anymore, but it's amazing. I'd like to bring Mr. Hudson. And this means a lot to me, having them two up here. I went to school with your mother years ago. She ran track, I ran track, I know. Rochelle, I graduated with Gloria Diller, and I reached out to her once I started seeing the paper a lot, and I started following. I actually followed you both during your careers in high school and yours now in college. I look forward to seeing yours when we get married, we're very proud of you, but Gloria had a great, great praise for you, and that means a lot, I think a lot, and I appreciate you showing up tonight. But I'll go ahead and let Steve read, Ms. Rochelle.
Before I start reading, I would like, my daughter was in cross-country and track at Christiansburg High, oh, it's been about 10 years ago, and I just wanted to say, when my daughter, her coach was Steve Shelton, and I'm not sure how many people remember him, but Steve just did a tremendous job, and then when Steve stepped in, I said, they will never find anybody as good as Steve Shelton, and then Shane comes in and does a better job. I'm very hopeful.
He does improve young, a sixth grader.
All right, Rochelle, I'm going to read a little proclamation for you, okay? Whereas the secondary school students at Christiansburg High School are provided with opportunities to excel on the athletic field as well in the classroom through interscholastic programs, and whereas the Christiansburg High School Track Team participated in district, regional, and state competition during the 2010-2011 school year, and whereas the Track Team member Rochelle Evans set a new AA State VHSL outdoor record at Harrisonburg, Virginia on June 2011, the girls' shot foot with a toss of 45 feet 9 inches, breaking a state record from 1983. Whereas Rochelle Evans was awarded the AA State VHSL State Championship in the girls' discus with a throw of 135 feet and 7 inches. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Christiansburg High School Town Council, meeting in regular session on February 21, 2012, adopts a resolution to recognize Rochelle's athletic achievement and with sincere best wishes for continued success.
He was an All-American. Congratulations. I think I read one of these last year, too. All right, let's see if I can get through it. Steve, you did a great job. Whereas interscholastic sports programs are a vital part of the curriculum of Christiansburg High School, and whereas students have opportunity to participate and be successful on the field of play as well as in the classroom, and whereas the CHS Track Team participated in district, regional, and state competition during the 2010-2011 school year, and whereas Travis Hudson was awarded the AA State VHL Championship Boys Nine Jump at Harrisonburg, Virginia, June 2011 with a jump of 6'5", and whereas he fought favorably recognition to this school, track, team, and community. Now, therefore, be it resolved that Christiansburg Town Council, meeting in regular session February 17, 2012, adopts this resolution in recognition of Travis Hudson's athletic achievement and offers sincere best wishes to continue success. There. I have to do it again. Girls' cross-country team, come on up with Coach. Like I mentioned before, I ran cross-country back in the day. I know you can't tell.
He was really good.
Thank you. Not only always that Rochelle and Travis say it's a book and a lot of time, but I'm definitely familiar with the pain you ladies put in, and it's always referred to as a trial of minds, and you did it, you finished third this year. When I was a senior, that's the first time we placed at stage, which was third, and the first time we ever won district as a boys' cross-country team, so it meant a lot to me back then, I'm sure it means a lot to you, and I look forward to tracking your success in years to come, and let's get to it. Now, Brad. Whereas the interscholastic sports programs at Christiansburg High School includes girls' cross-country track, and whereas many students at Christiansburg High School have excelled over the years with district, regional, and state recognition, and whereas the 2011 girls' cross-country team has continued this tradition of excellence, and whereas the Christiansburg High School cross-country track team participated in the Virginia High School League Group AA Championships held at Great Meadows Event Center in Warrington, Virginia, November 12, 2011, and whereas the Christiansburg High School girls' cross-country team placed third in overall AA classification and was recognized for their performance on the awards podium and brought significant pride to the school and community. Now, therefore, be it resolved, the Christiansburg Town Council, meeting in regular session February 17, 2012, adopts this resolution in honor of the performance of the girls' cross-country track team, performance in the state group AA championship, and extends best wishes for continued success. Congratulations, Mike. Thank you. You may want this.
Coach, if you'd like the final word, we'll let you have one.
Thanks, I really wasn't expecting that. Just, I truly want to thank you all for allowing us to come in tonight and recognize these athletes. They work so hard, you know, not only with their academics, but have to come to practice after that, put in so much into the program, and it's great for them to feel, you know, loved and wanted by the community in this way, so I really appreciate it. They got some big things coming, so we might be back here next year, I'm hoping, as well. And with Rochelle, if you didn't hear, she did finish sixth in the nation, just a few weeks ago at the national championships, and also set the AA indoor state record and won the indoor state championship in the shop as well, and has a full ride to Women Mary coming up this fall, so.
And was named All-American.
Yes, and was named All-American, yes, sir.
She's being recognized this evening by the Garmary County School Board, that's reason she had to kind of get out.
Rush.
And then I apologize, Coach, can you introduce the team?
Oh, yeah, sure, that's not a problem at all. Let's see, we go with Cassie Lucas first, Kelsey Wade, Eliza Eaton, Allison Sherman, Megan Burns, Rachel Bishop, they're going to do it. Bailey, Bailey Knowles, I've got my twins, and they give me a hard time, and Kenna Knowles was our top eight that we took to the state championships this year. It's the first time they've been on the podium since 1996, when they were third that year, so they've worked very hard to get back to this place, and they've done a lot for this program.
Congratulations, Coach.
Thank you so much.
Ladies, congratulations on our best wishes. I wanted to make a presentation to two of these, because I predicted that we would see one of these young people back here real soon. Is Leah Peamonte here? Leah, step up here. This is Leah's third time appearing before us, and she has, well, she set the state record as a ninth grader, and let me read what it says here. Whereas interscholastic swimming and diving are integral to sports offerings at Christiansburg High School, and whereas Christiansburg High School fields competitive swimming and diving teams at the Virginia High School League District, Regional, and State levels, and whereas Leah Peamonte set a 1-meter diving record at the Virginia High School League Group AA diving meet in 2010, establishing a new state record, and whereas Leah Peamonte was also named Virginia State Champion in the 1-meter Virginia High School League Group A diving competition in 2011, and whereas Leah Peamonte won the third, won her third consecutive state diving championship on the 1-meter board at the Virginia High School League Group AA meet held at Christiansburg, Virginia, Friday, February the 10th, 2012, with a score of 400.50. Whereas this outstanding accomplishment has brought state recognition to Christiansburg High School as well as favorable attention to the town of Christiansburg. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Christiansburg Town Council, meeting in regular session February 21, 2012, adopts this resolution in honor of Leah's superb diving performance and extends sincere best wishes for continued success. Leah, I said you'd be back, and you are. I may as well make the same prediction for this one. Ronnie, if you will come forward, please. Ron is a ninth grader at Christiansburg High School, and if you will listen as I read this resolution. Whereas swimming and diving program offerings are an integral part of the interscholastic sports program at Christiansburg High School, and whereas Christiansburg High School swimming and diving teams participate at the Virginia High School League Group AA District, Regional, and State competitions, and whereas Ron Peamonte won the 1-meter Virginia High School League Boys AA diving championship held at the Christiansburg Aquatic Center in Christiansburg on Friday, February the 10th, 2012, with a new state Group A record of 483 points, and whereas this achievement brought state recognition to Christiansburg High School as well as favorable attention to the town of Christiansburg. Now, therefore, be it resolved that Christiansburg Town Council, meeting in regular session on February the 21st, 2012, adopts this resolution in honor of Ron's superb diving performance and extends our best wishes for continued success. I predict we will see Ron back again. Congratulations. That's always a lot of fun, and young people, we know you've got homework and other things you need to do, so we'll dismiss you. If you'd like to leave, you're welcome to stay, but you don't have to stay unless you want to.
Thank you. Thanks so much.
We have with us this evening an old friend from Blacksburg. She is the manager of Blacksburg Transit, and Rebecca Martin. Rebecca, do you have a presentation to make this evening?
Absolutely.
Good.
Good evening. Good evening, everybody. I'm here to give my bi-monthly report on how Blacksburg Transit is doing in Christiansburg. And if you remember, last time I gave a capital update, and I said that we would be finishing our operating numbers. We were, we have finished those numbers, and I'm here tonight to present them. You will see, I'm going to go over this, and then I'm going to go over in these individually so I can tell you a little bit more about them, but in the big picture, the FY12 budget was this number here, the 199.757. To continue the service with no increase in the service, but to do the same service that we're currently doing, would be a $6,000 increase for FY13. The capital projects that we talked about last time, and I'm going to go back over them in just a minute, 5,300, sorry, and then if you wanted to do a second commuter route, which we've been talking about because of the success of the first one, the local match would be 5,200. This is purely just the local match that would be required to do all of these things. If you take them one by one, this is just talking about the local match that comes from you guys, it would be 6,000 to maintain it, and this is just a reminder that this is 50-50 money, meaning for every dollar that you all put into the system, we get a dollar of federal funds out of the JARC funds that we have for you all. So that means that really the funds that you're putting in is really creating 411, $514. So this is 50-50. For every dollar put in, you get another federal dollar that goes towards your operating For your capital, it is an 80-10-10. We are talking about getting four shelters. We provided that information to you last time, locations, and it would be a 10% match, 10% on state, 80% federal, so the total of, to get your shelters is 53,000. Your cost is the 10%, which is 5,300.
How many shelters are there, Becky?
That's for four, but I am working with the working group. They've already seen this presentation, and they can take that money and decide if they want amenities and rather have fewer, or if they just want to upgrade things that they already have, so there's still movement, they just have to be shelters. And the new service that is proposed is a second, doesn't, the first one's still running, but if you wanted to run a second commuter route, like we've been talking, we know we have people interested, this would be where the local match would be shared with Virginia Tech, the same way that it is currently, so what would happen is it would be 10,400 in JARC, which is a 50-50, but the 50% would be split between Virginia Tech and Christiansburg, so you'd be paying 25% of the total, which is 5,200. We put here, you have this already in your packet from last time, the ridership, and you can see that even though it goes up and down as it flexes with holidays and things like that, if you look at the February, you can still see comparing last February to this February, that you're still seeing an increase in your commuter ridership.
Becky, before you move on, is that second route, and I apologize, I was behind the last meeting, the second route, would that be a different time, or is that what the plan is, is to offer a different time and pick up route?
What we, what we did last time is we put it out to people who were interested, and we worked with Virginia Tech particularly, because that's a we worked with Virginia Tech particularly because that's a major employer. They had meetings, people came and told us what they were interested in. And then we drew from the people who were interested, the routes and the timing. So I can't tell you for sure it wouldn't be the same, but I do not think it will be. Because we had people interested in other timeframes already and I would assume that it would be them. But we would still have to go back and make sure people are interested. So we would go through the same process. And it would not start until like beginning of fall, because you want to, you want to hit it before they get their, as you know, before you buy your passes and stuff. Or if you want to, if you don't hit that timeframe, you'd want to hit January.
Okay, so the second route is to be determined, the exact timing.
Through the same process as before.
Sorry.
No, it's a great question because I'm sure people, we've talked about it a long time ago.
Now, the first commuter route is, that starts, is that noon, was that, am I right?
No, it starts in the morning.
It starts in the morning?
Yeah.
At what time?
Does it ride? Want to give me?
It starts, it starts early.
Okay.
Before 6:00.
Oh, okay.
Well, probably 6 o'clock is first, or 6:15 is the first pickup. And typically I'll be on for 6:30 maybe.
Are you making it there at 8?
It starts at Blue Line, comes through town, through Oak Tree, then hits, uh, Northgate.
Yeah, Northgate is where I stop.
And that's 7:30.
Okay. And then that's hitting your 8 o'clock. So it's probably a little before 7 is what I suspect it's starting then.
Thank you, yeah.
And then they bring you home in the, in the?
Well, they drop, they have stops.
They have stops.
You live in Oak Tree or near downtown or off around a grove, yeah.
Okay.
It's definitely easy.
5 o'clock.
But the second route, is that primarily for a lot of the, the wage and who work different schedules and who paid the guy?
We typically expect that that's who we would hear from, but it's not always. As you can tell by looking at the ridership, it doesn't necessarily mean that. We don't say, we just open it up and allow anybody who's interested. So we don't predetermine anything. So it's whoever comes forward and says they're interested. But we hear a lot from wage. And I know they're interested. So that's not a problem. I can show you plenty of emails to show you those interests. We just got to have enough interest to build a route around. And I have not built that because I would not do that until we were ready. All right. This is just another, and I can send this to you too, because this is not in your, I just realized, it's not in your actual report from last year. So I can send this to you so you can see it yourself and have time to go over it. This just kind of shows you if you double it and if you do the 25 or whatever the percentage is, what the local match is and what it is for the total budget that you're bringing in. Because we had asked you that last year. That was very important that you all understand the full budgeting. And so that's why I did this. For ridership, you've already received the ones that show you the ridership for each one individually. So I'm not going to actually do that. All I'm going to do is just kind of talk about some of the highlights, which were also in your report, and some things that you all asked us to look at. We, right here, we can, you can kind of see that you're about the same ridership as you were last year. We think, I mean honestly, that's pretty good. And it's been a tough year. So the Blacksburg Ridership's been doing about the same thing as well. We have found inside of these that we've had students that have asked from the middle school after school to go to the Tech Sportsplex. Is that correct name? Okay, I think that was right. And we're having lots of students ride this. This has been very popular after school. And we've been running around 30 kids that have been able to use it and ride the Go Anywhere. And may I say that my daughter also rides the Go Anywhere because she actually goes to Claire Dett lesson after school and is now able to go. So I'm very excited. So I am actually using it as well. The swim groups are starting in March, so they're not in these numbers. The Explorer route is almost about three times as many riders from a year ago. If you look in your packet, you'll see that. You'll see that the Go Anywhere has a slight decrease and the Explorer had a slight increase. So it looks like there's definitely movement between the two routes, which is what we're expecting. Because we're trying to encourage people to use the Explorer route. That's been a big piece of talking to people when they call in and trying to encourage them to do that. Denied trips were 128 in January and 145 in February. And in January, remember this is all January data for the most part, 22 courtesy stops were made, where people asked us to stop somewhere other than the regular stop on the Explorer. So it's functioning exactly like it's supposed to be functioning. We're watching those stops and seeing if a stop should be created, a new one versus having people ask us. But we don't have anything yet. We're still monitoring that. We did a short Go Anywhere survey. This survey does not, will not hit any, it was a very small survey. And I didn't bring my piece of paper with me that was in your packet. But it was only 19 people. It was very small, just to kind of get some ideas. We talked to the working group about it and we're going to conduct the next survey with the working group helping us with the questions. So if you have any questions that you would like asked, please let Councilman Van Heuser know because he'll be on that. And we're going to change and try to get a lot more people different times and things like that. This was kind of quick, just seeing where we stood right now, based on some of the conversations that we had. You can do, get some of the takeaways. Mostly that people are riding more than twice a week, not a big surprise with that. We're seeing work and, or shopping as top destinations. Once again, this is stuff we've been seeing before. People definitely learn by word of mouth. That's definitely very popular with the group that we're serving. People want extended hours. People are very happy with the price, so thank you very much. And a lot of people said that they would have to rely on family and friends. If you go back to data of what we did the first survey and looking at our transportation development plan, our long-range plan when we were looking, it said the same thing. So this is still telling you the same thing, that you have some people who are economically challenged, people who may not have access to a vehicle. And this is telling you some of the same things that you heard before. So this is kind of in sync, but we're going to do a more in-depth one and we'll be getting back information from that working group when we do that. This is just some overall numbers, just a kind of way of looking at it. Our ridership has increased over 100% since we started. From the first year to the last, went from 9,000 to 24,000 riding. We're looking at total trips of 55,304 since we began two years ago. And we have, just the last 12 months, 31,000. So I think sometimes, you know, to kind of look at the big picture of what's been going on out there is very important, as well as the individual stuff that you're looking at.
Becky, did that include in the number of trips, the Shoppers Express?
It would have included, yes, yes, sir. Customer feedback, I think this is also something else that you all have asked for too. You want to hear from people. So we want to share what we're hearing because they're really not speaking to us. I mean, they are, but they're speaking to you all. Because this is their way of saying thank you, or whatever they're looking for, or even concerns. And we want to make sure that we're getting this to you. So that's why we put them in your report. You'll see them throughout your report, little comments from comment cards, things that have been written in. And this is definitely a long one and I'll give you a couple of minutes here to read it, but it's from one of your commuter passengers who's really excited about the service and As I said, we'll get you a copy of this whole packet, so you'll be able to read this if you didn't get a chance to finish. Economic development is also a big part of transit. This is something that we talk about quite a bit. We started, you'll see in the last report, that we're looking at destinations and that employment is number one of why people ride. And for January, we actually find out the locations and these were the top three locations. So we definitely know more and more because we're starting to take some data in to finding out more about what our riders are doing. We also know that we've been asked to, you know, hopefully as the apartment complex, if everything is, from our planner, he said, hopefully we'll be able to be involved with this. Also, we have been asked when there are businesses coming in town, we definitely get asked about whether there's transit and what kind of transit there is available. And I think those are some of the, you know, benefits of transit that, you know, can get lost and out of sight. And we just want to make sure we put it in front of you as we get asked about it. That transit is definitely very important, not only to you all, but to businesses and to the people who ride. And that is my report for the evening. Do you all have any questions?
You explained some last year, but if you could refresh my memory, but about the JARQ funds?
The nice thing about JARQ funds is that Blacksburg does not receive any, so it's easier for bookkeeping to. It only belongs to Christiansburg. They are funds that are to help people get to employment. They are to help low-income people. Doesn't mean it has to be only that, but those are the type of funds they are. And when we had no service here, we were able to show that having a transit service would do exactly what is happening, that people would use it, even though it may not be the only reason. The people are using it for employment. And we've been able to show that some of those people definitely do not have cars or this is very important part to have transit available. So therefore we, that allows us to actually apply for those funds. Those funds are federal, they come through. And when they come to us, they're 50-50. So for every dollar that we put in locally, it draws down a federal dollar that can be then applied to it.
The shuttling buses during swim meets, that is billed separately to the aquatic center, or how does that work?
They are separately and we do bill the aquatic center for them.
Do you know, have you had rough ideas? I know there's been two and a half weeks, that's the last couple, have any fingers?
Yeah, they didn't have any in this, this month that we just did, so it'll be in March. But we do, we are putting them in the reports for you. They should be in there when they're happening. And I'll double check to make sure that is happening.
But that, that ridership doesn't show up on those numbers for ridership, does it?
They will show up under the Go Anywhere because that still has to be, it's still public transportation. The way we're setting it up, someone's calling for a ride, it's just that it's being billed differently. But what we try to do is let you know underneath that there's so many that are related to it. Overall, you, we see about the same because they, they come in about the same every year. So when you compare month to month, typically that's not a factor. It, that's why the ridership is pretty much the same. But we do look at that and it is there. And we, we have done some charts for you all that have shown the aquatic center.
It's a little bit better rate than if we didn't have the service already, correct?
Absolutely.
I think you explained that last time.
Yeah, we're not charging, you mean how we charge?
Right.
Yeah, we're not charging a fully allocated cost or anything. All we're doing is charging for the actual driver and the fuel. So it's, it's like, it's what, we do this for Virginia Tech. If Virginia Tech has a route that they want to add on that's part of their route, we wouldn't add a, you know, a $60 route. We would actually add a 25 or a $30 route, half the, it's about half the cost. And then if we have somebody like Athletic Center comes in who's not part of it, who wants it, then we would do a fully allocated. So you have that option always. And I always ask that question so that I can decide which rate. Because you're not helping with the admin cost then, is what you're doing. But in this case, that was what we wanted to do.
The shuttle service Becky is transporting people from overflow parking at Christiansburg High School to the aquatic center.
Yes.
And also running buses from hotels and hotels that need, if those folks need transportation.
Now, I, I don't, I don't know anything about hotels. Okay, I didn't know about hotels.
Like a new Holiday Inn, we're not shuttling people from there.
Someone's calling you maybe for that service, but we don't do it.
Yeah, we're not having, we're not doing any services like that. We're just doing the parking one that, that we had, you know, worked out a long time ago. And that's what we're working. Though we, long time ago, that might, that might be what's ringing a bell. We had a long time ago, if you remember, we had worked with hotels about having service to football games. And that was a long time ago. And we had found a bunch that were very interested. And we did it for a while and we ran out of buses. It didn't have enough to continue it. So that might be something that's ringing a bell. But that was a while ago and it wasn't related to this, it was related to football.
This one shuttle has been pretty favorable. Any comments one way or another, if you're in?
We just, you can see from the parking lot, we're so overflowed, we don't have a choice. Do you know what I mean? We have to provide a shuttle service because the parking is unreal the way it is.
And people, you know.
And they continuously run back and forth, so it's a great, you know, you're not waiting any more than like three minutes, probably.
They're taking first, every spot they can. I mean, there's no doubt about it. If you go over there, I think they're taking every spot. But then once those are all gone, then people really are desperate.
They have to have a place to park.
Then they have, then we're really, we become important for that, those people that didn't get the, that parking spot.
We didn't offer that, they wouldn't come back to the Christiansburg Aquatic Center. Do you know what I mean? We have to allow people the opportunity of a place to park when they come to an event. So if we didn't have shuttle parking, I don't know where we would send the cars, do you know what I mean, to be able to park. So Becky's service for us at the reasonable rate that she gives, and we actually did a comparable rate with just bus transit, is unbelievable numbers that we wouldn't even, never be able to touch. We'd have to put that on the meet organization and they wouldn't pay it, they wouldn't pay that to come to Christiansburg.
So what you're saying is it creates a positive experience when people are visiting so that they come back, I guess?
Absolutely.
In future events, if it was a big problem and they can't get to it. That's what I'm hearing, is that, that's what you're saying?
Correct. Yeah, they have to have a positive, because they're the loud voice when the bid comes in to Christiansburg or Richmond. It's, you know, the participants and the families.
Right.
So little things like, you know, I had to walk five miles to get to an event, you know, that's not going to go well. So I think the service and what we're doing and we're starting to master it's really, really hitting home, I think, good service.
I got one more, if anybody else has one. With the numbers, which, you know, we've increased from 9,000 to 24,000. What should we expect from here on out, or leveling off? Because that was a drastic increase.
It, it is. And I'm glad you asked that. That's an excellent question. There's a point where we're especially on the Go Anywhere, we're going to reach capacity. You know, there's only going to be so many people. We're working on trying to get groups, so that helps. But overall, it's going to start leveling out. There will be denied trips and that's where we have to decide on, you know, do we want to put in more? But right now, we, we don't. We're, we're now pushing people still to the Explorer. We still have capacity there. And so we're going to still, you know, you know, encourage people to use the Explorer because it's a set route and can take you, the numbers. So I think we're okay for the next year. I think we just need to really listen to people and listen to the comments and see, you know, is this working for them? And, you know, is it covering everybody's needs? And so we'll know a lot more in the next year. But definitely, I do not expect that it would double again. But hopefully we'll stay on the upward trend. We're about a 3% right now in Blacksburg. So I think from this point on, you can start looking for, you know, our trends and kind of just see a percentage increases happening. Excellent question.
Of course, the habit of doing with the, the, going in for requests that are denied, we're using that to see what appropriate adjustments might need to be made in the Explorer route.
Yes. Yeah, we have been asked and we're starting, we're trying to figure out how to get the denied ones, where they're located at, and kind of see what we can do with that. So we, we're, we're starting to pull that information now.
That's good to hear.
Becky, any other questions of Ms. Martin?
I have just one here. I'm sort of a slow learner. We paid 199,000 this year, is that correct?
Correct.
Now, I, I don't remember that slide yet. Are you saying that if we kept the same basic again next year, that would be the same thing?
It'd be $6,000 more.
$6,000 more?
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's just for a regular increase in the salaries and I'm sure you all are doing the same thing with VRS and all the different things that are happening. And be honest, fuel. Fuel is one of our biggest ones. So that was one we really had to put in there.
So the base would be about 2,000 plus?
Yes.
Ms. Martin, the increase was, it wasn't, as Mr. Shaw had to point out, was drastic.
and fantastic, frankly. As you know, I've been someone who has looked at this as, is this money well spent? Should this money be allocated to a better use in the town? And I love to see the numbers from the nine thousand to twenty-four thousand jump. That's, I think the wait-and-see approach is helping out quite a bit, frankly. What I'd like to know, though, is do you have an idea of the go-anywhere numbers that can be attributed monthly to the Aquatic Center trips that you provide back and forth? Because I think you told the mayor or someone that that actually includes those trips. Did you provide that by any chance? Could that be part of what you would provide information each month?
Yeah, what I, what I'm doing right now, and if that's okay, is, because it's getting so complex on the, on the, to get colors on there, is what I'll do, is I'll have the total numbers, and underneath, I'll put a chart and let you see those from those both years, whatever years that are up there. I'll let you see, like last year, how many Aquatic Centers were done and how many were done this time. Is that okay?
Oh, yes, ma'am.
That will be perfect, I can do that. I'm right here, so don't forget.
Becky, speak to us for just a little bit on marketing strategies, particularly for the commuter bus. Are we doing anything in that area?
Um, yeah, we really want to fill it up. It's, it's filled, but it still has like a couple more people we could be putting on there. So we're working with Debbie Freed over at Virginia Tech, because that's a really good source for getting information out and gathering in information. Before, we did a big one, though, we were trying to wait to see if there was going to be a second route or not. Because that, once we go through that process, if there was going to be a second route, then we could gather that information at the same time. So we'll well be doing it before August, and we will be pushing to, to get this route up, a couple more people, which I think we can do. But, you know, at the same time, we could do the other depending on what is decided. And honestly, the fate of this route really is falling on you guys. I think Virginia Tech is ready to go with it, they're just really waiting to see if you guys are interested in doing the route or not with them.
One of the things that's been brought up as well in recent months is, I guess, the bus is having more of a Christiansburg-oriented theme, or not so much artwork on it, but something that gives us some type of ownership over the vehicle itself. Is that how, what are the plans with that? I believe Mr. Barber brought this up a couple of months ago.
Um, I think right now, the working group has it, I think that they're going to be talking with the mayor, and that they're going to start those talks, and they're going to be chatting about what to do with that.
BT off the buses?
Take it off, just to...
Not exactly. We'd be a bus program, I think.
Yeah, I brought that up, as far, I don't, I think BT, I think going to a logo base, if, if service is expanding and we want other people to participate in it than just ourselves, it certainly has more appeal, curb appeal to our citizens to, to say, oh, that's our bus. Logo's fine, but the...
I like the buses with pictures on.
Yeah.
I'm glad you guys like that.
That would be the Mac Daddy, but, you know, the start by taking, not in your face of his Blacksburg Transit, you know?
And I think that we're going to continue, with the working group is going to go on and talk with the mayor, is that correct?
Right.
Okay, good. So we will definitely keep following up. I've already mentioned it, so they're ready for you to come talk. So I think it's excellent.
Can you explain one, one, well, the quick point? The building of the structures, bad weather, inclement weather, things of that sort. I believe the total cost was around fifty-three thousand, if I recall?
Yes.
For four structures to be built?
Yes.
Yet the Christiansburg match is only ten percent of that hundred percent total?
Yes.
How come the federal match is eighty percent on, in that regard?
It's because it's capital, and that is, and that's the good news about buying vehicles and stuff, because vehicles are next year, and they're in there, don't forget that, as you're, as you're thinking into the future. The good news is, is that typically, we're getting about that, and it's about a ten percent, and it hasn't changed. In all the years I've done it, even during hard times, that's been pretty good. The state match can change somewhat, and that might vary your ten up, but they gave us that number, so...
I would anticipate the state match very well might change. Do I get you on that a little bit?
But we're right now in good shape, so we're staying with it, so...
The other thing is, and just for a point of interest, the configuration of the roof of the structures will change some too, partly from the flat, right?
You, yeah, that was the, that's the other thing we were looking at doing. The flat roof, we've been having troubles with, and so we're doing the dome, actually, even in Blacksburg, for some of the runoff and, and some of the electric being high. Well, we have, y'all probably don't have quite as much of the, we don't want you to be able to reach things as, as we do in Blacksburg. It's really good if they can't reach a lot of things to do graffiti and things. So we have found those domes have done nicely. But the runoff and stuff has been better for our maintenance crew.
Becky, are you on Facebook? Blacksburg Transit have a Facebook account?
Blacksburg Transit does. Are you asking us Becky does? Becky's old. Becky does not know much about it. But yes, I have a very young, gender energetic people who tell me all the time what we're on and all the social media. We're, we're doing pretty much all of it because of the technology that we're doing. And so we've got, we got, I even know what it is, I can tell you Twitter, I can tell you're on Facebook.
When I asked the question about marketing strategies, perhaps promoting the, particularly the commuter route on Facebook and our own Christiansburg Facebook account?
Great idea.
To let folks know that we have this service and who they can call.
I'd like to touch on that a little bit, since you touched about the commuter route. First off, and Becky, correct me if any of the information I put out there, but I'll make this quick, Mayor. I mean, tech takes the commuter routes very serious, or route right now. There was almost a champion, when they first did a survey on this, in almost every department, and they got input, they had meetings, and to see if this would be a success. As you all know, I've written it, and when you talk about marketing, it's a lot like Starbucks strategy, you're given too much of word of mouth. If somebody in your department's riding, you know it within your department, and especially if they accidentally stop riding it, like myself, then you get emails and peer pressure from your fellow bus riders. But it does save money, there is a need out there for it, especially a lot of the wage employees. A lot of people don't know, it costs about two-hundred-and-eighty dollars to park, to get a parking pass at Virginia Tech. So that's going on. So it really means a lot to these people.
That football, huh?
No, that is just, I wish it didn't, it could have worked all there.
Just to get you close enough to take the transit, and then they'll hit you in the office, is that right?
If there's no other questions of Ms. Martin, Becky, thank you so much for coming.
Thank you.
Very, very informative, and we appreciate the progress that we're making.
Thank you very much. And you can take the copy of that, too, or do you need me to make copies of it?
Of this?
Yeah.
I have.
Okay, excellent. Thank you guys very much.
Okay, thank you. This is the part of our meeting where we hear citizens' comments. Is there anyone here this evening?
He wants to change a film now, if you can, here.
Okay, I think we're ready to go. Who are we missing? Here is...
It's not something that you go take, right?
As I was saying, this is a time we'll hear comments from anyone who would like to address counsel on any matter.
I like to do that.
Yes, sir. You'll just stand, give your name, and address your comments to counsel.
Okay. My name is Blake Owen. I am a resident of Christiansburg, taxpaying resident. And I wanted to come down tonight to raise awareness and raise a concern that I had about the street that I live on, which is Sleepy Hollow Road. I'm assuming everyone here on Town Council knows where that is. And my concern is that the traffic flow and the amount of traffic and the speed at which the traffic travels on that road is a danger, not only to the drivers that are passing each other, but also to the pedestrians, to the children that are on that street. And to give you a little history, I moved to that street November of ninety-nine. And originally, when you come past the Rec Center on Cambria, you take a left on Sleepy Hollow Road, and that was a sixteen-house cul-de-sac. Now, about four or five years later, and I don't, I don't have my dates correct, so I'm not exactly sure how it all progressed, but there was more development and more houses being built. And as that happened, they opened up the cul-de-sac to extend Sleepy Hollow down to connect to a road, Terry, which is called Terry Town, which connects to some of the townhouses. And then further on down the street to Wooden Shoe, which connects some of the other, the back neighborhood that was developed, and then to Diamond Hill South eventually. Now, at the same time, there was more development going on on Independence Boulevard. And as that was developed, there was a road that came up and connected with Sleepy Hollow, and once that was opened up, there became a lot more traffic flow. Now, in the last couple of years, since the development of Windsor Estates, I want to say that's the name of it, it connects one-fourteen to Franklin or Cambria, essentially. So as these concerns of mine became, I guess, more important, but my neighbors also, I mean, we talk, we see near accidents daily. Every time that I'm home in the afternoon, if I go to get the paper, you see two cars almost hitting head-on, because there's a couple factors that play into this road. And one of them is a, it's like a blind hill. As the road gradually inclines, you'll, you'll see a car, and you'll see it, but then it'll slightly, you know, disappear for a few seconds, then it'll pop up over the hill. And my neighbor across the street, when she's backing out, there won't be anybody coming. When she's out in the middle of the road, she's almost rear-ended on a daily basis. She's a teacher at Auburn Middle School, so she's out relatively, at a time where a lot of people going to work, kids are going to school. So in a, in a sense, the traffic flow is no longer, it's, it's, you know, it's originally intended, the intention of that road was for sixteen houses and a cul-de-sac. Now it has become one of the primary shortcuts or cut-throughs, if you will, like a main road through the, through the whole community. And I know, and I'm sure that everybody sitting here on Town Council understands that just how many people live in that neighborhood, and all the neighborhoods and townhouses that branch off of that road. So what I, what I did on behalf of my neighbors and myself, is I contacted the Chief of Police, Mark Sisson. They did some studies. I, I talked with Barry once, once before, because you were generous enough to give me a little bit of time to come to your office. And I, and it wasn't a planned meeting, you just said, you know, I have a minute to talk to if you want to talk. And basically, you recommended getting law enforcement involved and maybe asking them to set up radar. And that's a great solution at the time they're sitting there. But as soon as they pull off, it's like, you know, you see cars going to speed limit or less, back to, you know, a higher rate of speed. And the speed study reflected, in a day's time on that road now, it's like a thousand cars going up and down Sleepy Hollow Road. So this is my first Town Council meeting, I wasn't sure how things went, in fact, when I called today, because I was, somebody recommended that I come to Town Council, because I felt like with this type of issue, the only solution really can be provided by you all sitting on Town Council. So when I talked to the lady today, she said, well, we have a large agenda, you know, you could probably go down there and speak to them. And I, I realized all the recognition and awards that were going on. But I'm glad to see that. But to put it in perspective, I'm just a concerned citizen, just concerned for my own daughter, the other children on my street. I've seen things, I've experienced things myself with traffic. This isn't just a random, I moved into a new street, I don't like the way the traffic goes up and down my street. I've just seen it progress. And I've seen it become a dangerous situation to where I think it's not a question now is if something happened, we should wait and see what happens with this. It's just a matter of when something's going to happen. And I've, I've got some pictures here, I didn't realize we had access to PowerPoint things, I could have done something a little bit more professional, but I guess initially, I just wanted to bring some awareness to what that road looks like now, and some of the streets that are branching off of it. So that's, that's really all I have to say at this time, other than I hope that maybe going forward, now that you understand what I'm sitting here, what I'm presenting to council, maybe you guys can come up with a, with a possible solution or some options that we can look at. I have included, there's a couple pictures that I went over to Blacksburg today and took a couple of pictures of, they're in that stack of pictures, of a, of a speed hump or speed bump, it's located in a few neighborhoods over there. And a, and a speed limit sign right near campus, right in front of Lake State, it goes by the German Club, I can't remember what, South Gate. And it has actually a digital printout of how fast you're going, and it has a speed limit posted below. So I know there are some options as to what we could do to try to help eliminate the speeding of traffic, and I just want to find out what that could be.
Okay.
Blake, y'all have quite a few, there's a bunch of kids on that street.
A lot.
And in fact, it's not very sleepy anymore, I guess, if I remember best where I put it, and it's a bunch of, and I, and I'll be honest, I use the, to avoid the traffic at the, at the four-sixty interchange. I use the Sleepy Hollow to go back behind through Windsor Estates to get to buy a house on one-fourteen.
Right.
Always, whenever I can use it. And it's never a time I go through there, there's not a ton of traffic, Franklin coming up through that street next to that, to the, either from the high school side or from the recreation center side.
Right.
You know, it's not uncommon for that area out there, as it grows, or streets to be congested. And to be honest with you, I've gone down Sleepy Hollow several times, and I've gotten lost because of all the streets that seem to be converging right there. I'm going to refer this to the Street Committee to take a look at. I don't know what the solution might be, unless it would be to reduce the speed limit, but as you say, if officers are there, they don't speed.
Right.
The speed wagon seems to him, but you can't leave it out there permanently.
Right.
But we'll, we'll let the Street Committee take a look at it and work with Chief Sisson to see if we can come up with a solution.
Can I speak to that for real quickly?
Yes, please.
Mr. Howard, we, Councilman Ben Hoosier and I comprise the Street Committee, we advise council on certain issues. This has been a recurring, increasing request in certain areas through town, and with Mr. Nelson's help, the town engineer, the council has adopted VDOT standards, or it's called Traffic Calming.
Okay.
And some of the pictures that you had, some of those are ideas, and there's other, yeah, there's other ideas with bump outs and so forth. Anyway, without having to reinvent the wheel, and with the new VDOT, not, not the VDOT fifteen, twenty years ago, but the VDOT of today, they have some very objective, solid thresholds to consider traffic calming measures, and, and with, with the mayor's request, I think that's what we'll do. This is exactly what we want, is people to come and say, and a part of the traffic calming, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Nelson, requires a preponderance, a majority of people that are affected to sign on to that. So if, if, you're probably not meaning one, one person can affect that change.
Right.
If, if certain thresholds are met, then we will actually call your neighbors and say, most of you feel this way.
Right.
But anyway, to let you know that we're, we're not, are moving in that, we've moved in that direction, and this council has already adopted those standards. So, and that's exactly what I tell people, is to come and, and make that request and get the ball rolling, so you're, you're not falling on deaf ears here.
Sure.
And we've also adopted, we have those things in place that's not subjective and say, okay, we're going to do everything here, or we're going to do nothing. No, we have metrics now to say, so...
Well, VDOT will allow speed bumps, Mr. Nelson?
They don't call them speed bumps anymore, though.
They call them something else.
Speed bumps. Has to meet certain criteria. Speed bumps are more calming, you know?
I understand the figure, longer. What, what kind of timeline are we looking at? I know, Blake, I appreciate you coming out here.
Well, it sounds like, and one of the thresholds is your simple volume of traffic. And it already meets the other standard, it's a residential, you know, it's a residential street, so, anyway, again, you're not falling on deaf ears, and it's not going to sit up on the shelf someplace, and one way or the other, we'll be taking that under advisement and, and, you know, maybe even in two weeks, when we have our next Street Committee meeting, maybe, I mean, we'll talk about the practicality of that, but we'll be advised by staff how your situation measures up against...
You say you did a traffic count yourself?
Yes, sir. Well, the, um, Chief Sisson...
Chief Sisson did, okay.
So he had a twenty-four-hour cannon out there, and had some real numbers to deal with, not, it's a lot, it's a bunch of cars. Not, it's a lot, it's a bunch of cars.
Yeah, he actually had an email form and they gave a, like a ratio, you know, traffic going twenty-five to thirty, you had this many this hour, thirty or thirty-five, you had this many cars going, you know, and it went all the way up to fifty-five or sixty.
Now, there is a school bus that travels that way.
There's a few.
Did you say fifty-five to sixty?
Yeah, there's a few that only have a little going fifty-five, sixty miles an hour.
I think any neighborhood, even, even our neighborhood or your dad and his neighborhood, yeah, it's, it's...
Some people...
But I think they just want to push it to see how, how far, but, but you do see in, in, in all the residential neighborhoods and, and you're certainly not alone, we've all experienced this whole thing.
Right.
You know, if we can't put in speed bumps, maybe we dig ditches.
Yeah.
They won't, they won't impede the snowplows in it, we've just got a ditch in the road.
You also have a lot of parking lots on, on, on...
I was going to say, I'm your neighbor and we have, you have...
Most a lot of people park on the street.
It's very...
They have a single car garage and you have to back one, like if there's two people presiding in the house that drive, you have to have one person back out and the person usually just parks on the street. So you have a lot of housing down there, parking in front of their house on the street, but more and more you're seeing them park practically in the front yard because they're afraid you're going to get there.
But it just, it sounds like some of the data's already available that we can use to make a decision. So we'll use that data and obtain any more that we need to come to the recommendation.
Blake, would you mind us getting your information? Because typically, the street committee meets...
Sure.
Two weeks, usually a council night, right before council.
Can you email it to Mr. Helms and, and...
Okay.
I said Mark's probably got it on file somewhere, doesn't he?
Well, I have your email, I can email Barry.
Just email it and I'll, I'll make it.
And you'll get my information too.
We'll get right on it.
Is that good?
CC me if you don't mind.
Okay. All right, I'll do that.
Okay, thank you so much for coming.
Thanks for your time.
Can I see another hand up back there?
Blake, if you want to wave at that, we'll give these pictures back if you want.
Oh, you can throw those away. I didn't, I didn't know, like I said, if I, if I could have brought a laptop and did a PowerPoint presentation, but I thought those would probably suffice if somebody didn't realize what I was referring to, they could, you know, that, you could tell by looking at those.
Okay.
And those were cheaply done.
Thank you, sir.
I thank y'all.
Thanks, Blake.
Thank you.
That's for me. Having one of the rescue squad personally out back here.
My name is Debra and I live on twelve seventy-five Tranquility Via, the South Independent Boulevard. And I have a little bit of knowledge somewhat from where I'm from in Sydney, Australia, of efforts with calming traffic and the urban sprawl that we're experiencing in this area. And at the end of the day, the only thing that seems to work is to prohibit through traffic which is taking shortcuts. And I, I actually heard one business on the radio saying to some of the employees, we're running late, you know about the shortcut, they're going to take the shortcut. And what they're referring to is actually going through this neighborhood. And I think that's what should be looked at pretty closely. The traffic is making the, going through this neighborhood to get out throughout one fourteen to maybe save a minute or so. And individually, we don't realize that we're just saving one minute, but collectively, we're creating a whole new thoroughfare through there. And I know along sleepy hollow road there, that there's cars parking on the street making it quite narrow. It's not part of that, that the street is something I designed for through traffic. So I think part of the solution is to try to understand how to limit traffic going from one end of the development to the other, using it as a thoroughfare. And that usually takes a pretty tricky police enforcement to get, make it happen, but it can be done.
One other brief comment. With Mr. Owen still here and Mr. Milne, the, now that one fourteen is going to construction, is that contract going to end?
Supposed to be bid at the end of the month.
Ah, bid?
The bid's supposed to be open at the end of the month.
Oh, bid open? Okay. With one fourteen going to construction very soon, weeks, not, not months or years, the neck, the town's number one priority in town is the connector road between one fourteen and North Franklin Street. And if you can visualize where Cornerstone Homes comes there on one fourteen, that Councilman Hall will no longer have to cut through that area, will be able to use, as a lot of people will, is that connector between one fourteen and North Franklin Street. But that will connect at Cornerstone Homes, what's it, Patriot Way or, no, it's...
Quinn Stewart Boulevard.
It's Quinn Stewart, thank you, Randy. Quinn Stewart Boulevard and come up right next to Cambria, what's the...
Cambria Crossing.
Cambria Crossing and come right through between Food Line and Horn Funeral Home, if you can imagine that. But there, you can already see where the road's going to go, the railway's been set aside and that's a separate issue. But just to let you know that that is the town's number one transportation priority, so all of our VDOT allocations right now are accruing to accomplish that project. In fact, there's some, some engineering work to be done very soon. That's also where the Huckleberry Trail extension is going. So just to let you know that that's going to help a lot.
Quick question for Barry. In Oak Tree, I think between Oak Tree Boulevard and Cambria, where it's still, is that still blocked off? Is there an estimated time when that's going to open up?
Not until he finishes his building in that area. Still, he hadn't turned, he hadn't finished it, so he had to turn it over to town.
There's no EDA at all?
The economy.
Well, there's a lot of folks who want to see that street open, I know that. We've had more than our share of emails on it and telephone calls. So it's up to the developer now.
See you in minutes first.
Oh, Ms. Turner.
You hit on lots of topics tonight.
But not on super, right? But not on super, Ms. Turner?
Oh, no. What's going on up there? They must be having tons of problems the way they're staying in one area for a long time. But I live on a cut-through street that has a sign posted, no through traffic, that has a fifteen mile per hour sign in my front yard, that has potholes that get filled in so the ditch doesn't work idea.
If you don't fill it in, it...
Well, but we're still filling it in, dust and everything else. So good luck, okay? We have gone to the street committee. Nothing has ever been said to me that we need to get all of the neighbors in on this to get some of this done, but we can get them if you want them. And, you know, I don't know, Becky, I'd said something too about an update on the project. I don't know if that's been in the paper yet or not.
It has not.
It has not. But we've had the study done. And it's like you say, the police come up there and as soon as they leave, well, with the construction going on, as soon as the workers put the signs down, zoom, 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 constant. Well, no, I take that back, it isn't as constant now, it isn't as constant, but it's still over fifteen miles an hour. And it's still being cut through. And I would be awfully not being cut through and having the speed bumps, many of them, and still keeping fifteen miles per hour. But I don't know what's going to work.
It's kind of bumpy out there now, isn't it?
It does not matter, Mr. B. They still go down through there. And if you want to see the dust on my windowsills outside...
I've seen it. I don't cut through anymore, Ms. Turner, and I kind of miss you too because I like that.
As I said one other time, as a retired teacher, it hurts me to think we have so many residents that can't read the signs and evade the law for no through traffic or fifteen miles an hour.
Okay, well, thanks for your comments, Ms. Turner. And I don't know that you need to get your neighbors involved, but you've done a pretty good job in the last...
Well, I, I've been a faithful attendee here.
I know you have, and we appreciate that.
But I have got a new sewer line in water, though.
Now, we knew that was going to be a drawn-out process, but we're still working on it, I know. Hopefully it'll be completed sometime soon.
Yeah, hopefully it will be completed.
Okay. Does anyone else want to address council at this time? If not, we have a presentation, wait a minute, we've done that, got to check it off. Ordinance to amend the tourism agreement, section two, oversight of the organizational cooperative agreement between Montgomery County and the towns of Blacksburg and Christiansburg for the creation and implementation of a joint tourism program. This amendment will state that the director will be an employee of the fiscal agent and will not be an independent contractor. Does everybody understand that?
It's the very bottom of the first page is what we'll be changing. And takes Blacksburg, Montgomery County, change also.
We just hire the director under an independent contract, but I don't know who made that decision or who would, may, maybe the county, if they're going to be the fiscal agent and so they'll be carried as an employee and will all chip in, her salary will be paid from tourism money.
Originally, we planned on me being independent contractor because there's less, could be less liability and other issues. But since we were going to be controlling the person, they were still going to be an employee, so we weren't avoiding any of that.
And that was one of the reasons. They're still going to be under control of the three entities. Do we need action on that, Mr. Town Manager?
Yes, sir, please.
I love that we...
I'm sorry, Julia.
I'll second it.
All right, there's been a motion and a second to amend this contract that the director will be an employee and not an independent contractor. Ms. Clerk, oh, council, I missed, and so it's with three entities involved.
Councilman Barbara?
Aye.
Councilman Hall?
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilman Joe Walter?
Aye.
Councilman Stikes?
Aye.
Councilman Ben Huser?
Aye. And I heard a unanimous vote there, thank you. And that, and that position has been advertised and I don't know whether interviews have started yet or not, but it has been advertised. Number four. Number three, consideration of implementing a small purchase policy procedure or a procedure policy. I'll let Mr. Helms explain this, but it's putting a minimum of what you can purchase without getting bids or...
The State Procurement Act allows localities to adopt their own small purchase procedures. And this is what we're working towards. Tonight, I'd like to see, y'all have time to read over any comments. Attorneys are looking at it also, so give any, any comments, I'll incorporate those and we'll get them to the attorneys. But basically what it allows is if you purchase this under five thousand, we get quotes or just ask for prices, you know, and try to get the best price we can, which don't have to. Between five and thirty thousand, get verbal or written quotes. And from thirty thousand to a hundred thousand, you have written informal solicitations and get four bidders. Instead of doing the advertisement for bid, posting it for two weeks and all that stuff, it speeds up the process some. You're still getting competition, but it reduces a lot of paperwork.
For procurement purposes, you're still, you have to have to sign off on anything above ten thousand, right? You are representative, so that's all.
I'd prefer to see that changed to the town manager or the director of finance to sign off on it rather than, those are two people that are appointed by the council. And, you know, if we have any question or anything, we can talk to them. Otherwise, you've got employees signing off. And in addition, I'd like to see that number lowered from ten thousand to some number lower than that. And I don't see why they shouldn't be in a position to sign those off anything over five hundred dollars.
I would think though, just in territory, I guess, the designated representative, you're going to personally be asking them to do that, it's almost like an agency issue. You're going to be asking that person to sign a contract or accept a bid or whatever. You don't give that free floating powers to anyone out there, I would imagine. It's going to be you or someone you're saying specifically, I want you to do this for this purpose. So you got your hands on everything.
I try to. But five hundred dollars is awful, small amount, I mean, you can't...
I can see this in our bills this month, I'm thinking...
Yes, it's a...
Well, I wouldn't have a problem with raising it to twenty-five hundred.
You may be talking about two different things.
We are talking two different things. One is I'd like to see...
The checks are always going to come out of there. So you're not, the checks are one thing. The question is, what do you want people to have to do in order to buy something for five hundred dollars? And if you want the town manager and the director of finance in it, with all due respect, you might not get anything else done.
Well, but maybe the five hundred dollars is too low a number, but...
That's why ten thousand was picked and that's, this is a standard ordinance.
Yeah.
And we were shocked y'all didn't have it.
I'd like to see, if you, even if you stick to the ten thousand, I'd like to see one of them sign off on it.
Well, I mean, when the check is issued, they will.
They have to... Yeah, but... But I'm talking about from an author...
Approval of the purchase.
Approval. You've got to write a justification of some type, don't you?
On the second page, halfway down, says purchases in excess of ten thousand be approved by town manager or one of his designated representatives.
Right. But I'd like to see changed from designated representative to town manager or director of finance. And recognizing that she may be signing off on it or she may have a designated, they should write the check.
But the assistant town manager, though.
Well, I had that written down too. But, yeah, those three, I'd like to see one of the three sign off on it.
I'm wondering, you know, if, if we have, if we have definitely entrusted the power of running the town to Barry and if he has someone, and let's say there's something needed in the planning department or under the street committee, I would assume that those department heads would be designees up to a certain point. But I don't know that, I mean, I, I just think that the lesser we have, the lesser amount that we state that has to require signature, we're just creating more work and then you have to stop and explain. I think the ten thousand dollar limit is fine. I, I wouldn't, I certainly would not recommend a, for lack of a better word, I guess, a signing gauntlet to get something done. Ten thousand dollars in, in today's market is not a whole lot of product, so...
It's not a lot of product, but it's a lot of money. And what I'm getting at is, and I agree with Mr. Hall, that if we can have the town manager, assistant town manager, or director of finance, one of those three sign off on it, one of those should be available about any time, if you've got something that, that needs to be taken care of, to sign off on it. And it gives us a, a little more level of keeping it in the realms of the people who are overall responsible.
I didn't, I don't want to put Barry on the spot, but I would assume that would be... Designated representatives. That would be your representatives to sign off on something. Or are you looking more...
Everyone's filed, I've told Wayne a couple of times, go ahead and sign that. But I don't have a problem with having three people to, only ones that can, can sign it.
But it's always going to be, like Mr. Nelson, it's going to be the department head, though, it'd be the representatives, that's going to be...
Yeah, Adam signed some, you know, if I'm not here, he signs them now.
Just me personally, I feel comfortable, I mean, we trust Barry and we, we trust his judgment. I, I do believe if you narrow it down to three, I mean, it's a lot of work.
To lower that, to lower that figure...
We're not talking about the lower right now.
It creates, it creates a bottleneck when it comes to purchasing. And I know, Connie, when I was at the school board office, every principal had sent purchase orders over five hundred dollars. I spent a half a day just signing off on purchases. It, it just bogs everything down.
But if that's the way you folks feel, that's fine, I just feel like it should be one of those three.
And that's just my comment. Any extra comments?
Yes, sir.
Well, I'll ask Barry, Barry, are you comfortable with this? I mean, you understand what's at stake here for council and for staff and operations and so forth. Are you comfortable with the way this is written?
Yes, but like I said, still the attorneys need to go over it.
Okay. But you, from an, you know, from a judgment standpoint, knowing day-to-day business and knowing also council, you know, what, what our concerns are, is, but if you're comf, if you're comfortable with this and it meets legal muster, then, you know, seems, that's what we, you know, that's what we have you and Val to do, is to make sure it's a good policy.
This is the way the state ordinance, or state code reads, it says, these are the same limits they have in the state's code.
So we can make it more restrictive if we wanted to, but maybe not really, yeah, that's what we're talking about. But I trust Barry and Val on, advise us on this.
Yeah.
I don't know if it would be beneficial...
Mango is not a choice to integrity.
No, I don't know if it would be beneficial, but one thing you may want to do is at a future council meeting, go over how it is that things get purchased. Because I'm not sure, I mean, I think we all think there's a purchase order or something like that, I think there may be, there probably may not.
We don't...
There may be an email that says, hey, you need to go do this. So one of the things we may want to do is make sure council is, is fully aware of exactly how our purchases are made, because that may make it a lot clearer about why Barry can take care of it as one of his designees.
And Brad decides he needs some new stuff for the recreation department. We don't need to know what he's getting, he just needs a procedure to go through to get it purchased.
But what I'm saying is, I'm not suggesting you need to know that. What I'm saying is, you don't know what the overall, Brad doesn't have a purchase order that he submits. Brad comes in and says, we need this, it costs five thousand dollars. Barry sends him an email or says, okay, use the small purchase and go get it. So the approval, you see what I'm saying?
Yeah. It wouldn't hurt for us to know what that policy is.
Right, know how that's done. And that, I think that's going to answer everybody's question and problem with it.
I'll get that scheduled next couple minutes.
The question I would have on this would be, and actually this is for you, Jim, is the liability coverage amount, I believe it's a million, that names the town, us, et cetera, et cetera. That's standard? Or has that amount been, had been raised? It's a million right now, just, that's what I was...
Right, it, uh...
Just a lot of thoughts in my mind as to...
Probably, probably a little bit.
That would be something I would, maybe we would look at.
But I think when you, you're not far from the one in the market anyway for your liability coverage, right Barry?
Well, this is the requirements on contractors.
On contractors.
Right. Oh, yeah, for the state, again, it's the minimums.
Most contracts we'd be dealing with would probably just be carrying that, I would imagine.
Right.
Some of them have more. But we, we had a part-time, a contracted custodian at a police department for a while in the vehicle. He had to get a million dollars of coverage. I mean, it wasn't very expensive for him.
Right, right.
Because what he was doing was at high risk.
Yeah.
But that's what he had to do.
I guess I'm thinking a bigger, yeah, bigger picture on some of those.
Right. If we're contracting out for a, you know, it may be that if you're putting something out, you know, for the guys who are doing the sewer and water line or whatever, they may need more.
All right, is everybody comfortable with what we said, Barry is going to come back with something that...
Well, just on the point of the liability policy, I mean, Mr. Quinn saying he thinks it's low, is that something we should look at as well?
I'll get with our insurance agents and keep what they recommend.
All right. All right, so we don't need to take action on that. Uh, next on the agenda is action to reject the PPEA for pavement maintenance program. And I think we, what we want to do is to issue an RFP. Is that right for the...
My personal guide, your address is to go out and advertise for additional competing PPEA proposals. After the attorneys looked at it, they decided it'd probably be better off to use RFP instead. And so, and looking at it, and we understand why. So we'd like to reject the PPEA proposal received, giving their money back and issue an RFP. When you did accept a PPEA, they have to give us a deposit.
Is that considered a breach of contract?
No, no. We can reject it for, our policy says we're going to reject it for any reason.
It's a, it was a little early. You've got some, basically gratis help coming from the university. And the RFP, when it comes into place, we'll have taken that into account. Uh, so as nice as it was to have gotten a PPEA on it, uh, it was, it was a little bit early. We, you know, we've got the work from, is it DTTI, is that right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so we're getting that for nothing. I mean, not a charge to the town, our tax dollars.
Their deposits are nineteen thousand.
So we're giving them the deposit back?
Right.
It's not costing us anything? All right, we need action on that. That's the rejection of the PPEA.
So move.
Motion on the second to reject this maintenance program for pavement. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Close, no. Motion carries. We do have a request. Wait a minute, I've got, I've got requests. You have in front of you four or five resolutions recognizing the Christiansburg High School football team for their outstanding season, the Christiansburg High School basketball team for winning the state championship, the Christiansburg High School wrestling team for winning their eleven consecutive state championships, and the Christiansburg High School academic bowl for taking second place at the state for their respective, uh...
It really is kind of the, I've mentioned somebody else this past weekend. Is it ever going to be this good again? I mean, we, we're on top of so many sports and academics and, man, it's...
We'll see next year.
They'll say there's nowhere to go.
I move we approve all resolutions as well.
As far as the discussion, one thing I want to add is, I agree, and I'm just talking in regards to the, uh, wrestling team. Wrestling, wrestling team. You know my roots, I'm right here, right? There is, uh, there's been a few individuals, I think we've got one this year, and I apologize because I'm not recalling his name, who is a four-time state champion, freshman, sophomore, junior, senior, and I think that was one.
Your wife is...
The two.
Effortly.
Yeah, Brad, and who's, yeah, and brothers, yeah, there's been, there's three of them. I really think that might be something we would look at recognizing, because that's, that's a rarity. Doesn't happen a lot. And that maybe we should individually recognize those individuals. Because they also went to a lot of your, of your national, I agree, once we hit the state at the end, unless you're with a club. But that might be something...
We're going to let the coach... There are six...
There's six state champions, but there's...
Six state champions, and I thought we had let the coach introduce those young people. I don't mind doing the resolution, but if you do one for him, do you do one for the other five?
No, I, I think that what, what I mean is, if you, if by virtue of them being a four-time state champion, never finishing less than the best, instead of Virginia, four successive years, which again, it is very difficult to do, uh, I think we might want to look at recognizing those individuals individually. I mean, it's part, you're right, it's part of the team, and the team's getting the recognition, eleven straight years, the team's unreal.
I think we need to go back into the annals of wrestling.
Wrestling.
Wrestling with a R. We've had a lot of state champions over the years.
Yes, we have.
And, and, you know, if we all of a sudden now decide we're going to select one or two that may have been three-time state champions, then, you know, we're up in the floodgate going all the way back to the early eighties probably with state champions. Uh, you know, and, and I think that the recognition is fine. I mean, I'm not saying that we should not recognize these people. But I'm saying, we may have an onslaught of, well, you know, you got him, but five years ago, I was a three-time state champion, where do you cut it off?
I don't know, but I, I do get the feeling just a little bit that we're taking for granted the fact that this wrestling team is so good that only six this year, only five next. I mean, I really, that's, what an accomplishment. Uh, they are the state champion. I mean, we cannot recognize anything higher than that. That might be something we would look at. But again, I, that's why I'm cutting it off at this four-year.
Something to recognize, think about recognizing too, uh, is a kid from Virginia Tech that's graduated from Christian High School, who made it all American, he's all American.
Devin Carter.
I'm so damn tired of hearing whores as at these meetings. You know, well, maybe in this next, maybe in this thing with the, with the wrestling team, that we include in this resolution the mention of the state championships this year, the six individual state champions.
What's in there?
As part of this. Is it...
It's already in there.
No, by name.
Oh, by name, we could do that, we could do that.
But I mean, really, truly, we're getting...
But we don't want to take away from the team, it's the whole team, but...
But, but we're getting to the point where whores in ourselves today.
Isn't that wonderful? Isn't that great?
We do recognize other state champions. I mean, not only, I mean...
You mean, just, no, we do.
Yeah.
Always do.
We usually always do. And possibly would let the coach point them out, you, you saw how I struggled with those things. And, uh, you know, we do one for the team, coach, but we have several individual ones that we give to them that we don't have to re-allow, but they're recognized out there.
Well, I, I would just put it out there, I think that a state champion should be recognized. Again, it's not that many. I don't know, was it thirteen weight classes? It was not that many.
And there, I can see Becky's, uh, she's giving you the nod, she wants to help you out with this.
Mr. Quinn, I would have, if that's something, if council wants to do it, that's fine too, if they want to do it.
I'd like for us to recognize it, Mike, I understand, but...
I have no problem drafting those resolutions.
You know, we, we do recognize other sports individual state champions, and these, these gentlemen, they are individual state champions.
And they train twelve months a year, just like these other sports do as well. And not only that, don't think for a second that some of your other teams aren't benefiting from the fact that these kids are training so hard. They play football as well, they play other sports, so...
And this young lady that received the resolution this evening, Rochelle, she had to leave to go to the school board office because they are also recognizing her. I just wonder, are we taking over something that the school board ought to be doing with recognizing state champions?
They don't have the money for it.
We have, we have no responsibility as far as financing, uh, schools or involvement in the running of the schools, but we do recognize these kids simply because they're Christiansburg kids.
And to me, what's important is I always see different people coming to a town council meeting.
And I'll tell you, Steve, when you and I went to that meeting together, I'm sorry, I made an interruption. I always do, I'm sorry. Uh, Steve, when me, when you and I went to that meeting together a couple of years ago, that, I think maybe Ben, Rico, whoever was there, whoever, they mentioned us. We said, where are you from? And we said, Christiansburg. At that time, they said, well, y'all have, what was it, something, a Virginia Tech's close by? And men, y'all have some incredible wrestlers, wrestlers down in that area. And I thought, good, this has been years ago, it's been three years? But, uh, obviously it brings a lot of favorable recognition.
I'll do whatever council wants me to do. I don't know who these six young people are.
I have no problem drafting resolutions if council feels they want to give that room.
I think you have an assistant right there, Barry.
Well, you're killing me with these resolutions. I'm, I'm running out of words. It would be very standard and personalized, it's one. I don't know that it would necessarily have to be read six times.
That's what I was saying.
That's right.
Read, read the team, let the coach recognize it, but the...
Well, I think what you do is...
Just give the resolution to the kids.
Well, I think what you do is...
Now, I could support that, yeah.
I think what you do is you'd read the resolution for the team, and then you'd read one resolution. If you had six state champions, you're, and you just read it and you say, and therefore be resolved that such and such, and such and such, and such and such. You just hand them out that way.
We don't need a policy. If you, if you want to do that, except believe you're going to read, you volunteer to read it.
Oh, I'd be glad to read that.
I mean, for me personally, the, the girls cross country, I'd like to, the coach to point out if there was a, uh, all-stater on there and if we decide to give her something as well or the individual, I mean, but I, personally, I don't, I read two tonight, and that was, that was plenty for me, and I think the point got across, uh, so...
And Rochelle is an all-American as well?
Yeah.
Recent.
Give me the names of these state winners and Becky, will you help me put together? All right.
If that's a will of council, I can, I'm just throwing that.
I'd like to, I'd like to see, see this recognized.
All right. I'd like to see us approve the six, the four that we have in front of us now that we have a motion on the table for it, and we'll get into the rest of it later.
But if you don't have a motion, I'll make one.
I did, I think...
And I'll send you some.
We do have a motion to adopt these four resolutions for the high school teams. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Now, you decide later whether you want to adopt, adopt the resolution, but you're running out of time. This is going to be April the seventeenth. And we're going to do it at the Christiansburg Aquatic Center in the beauty room because we've got so many teams coming in to, for recognition, so...
I would like to see this recognized, recognized as six individual state teams.
All right, six, six...
State champions.
State champions. All right, if somebody can get me their names, Becky and I will put something together.
I'll provide them tomorrow.
Thank you.
Yes.
Just do a vague mail.
Yes, sir.
Can I make one correction for the...
Don't be correcting my spelling.
Okay, then I'll give it to you. It is just a...
Yes, make the correction.
Oh, we can do it.
That's why we're giving it.
Just give it to you.
That's why, that's why we're giving it to you, so you can make corrections.
Okay, very good, I...
Tell me what it is.
Well, it's just, uh, group four, the last...
We approved in, in concept these resolutions. It's up to the mayor, it's the mayor and the, and the associate down, attorney, Mr. Hall, and Becky to get it all done.
I think we're ready for a closed meeting.
All right, we do have a request for a closed meeting under Virginia Code Section 2.23711, A1 for discussion, consideration, or interviews of prospective candidates for employment assignment, promotion, performance, emotion, salaries, disciplining, or resignation of specific public officers, appointees, or employees of any public body. And the closed meeting is being held for discussion regarding the consideration of a planning commission applicant and then another closed session under the same state code for consideration of the acquisition of real property, real property for a public purpose or the disposition of a publicly held property where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body. And this is to discuss purchase of a right of weight for a trade.
So move.
So.
Motion on the second to go into closed session. Ms. Clerk, will you poll council?
Councilman Barber?
Aye.
Councilman Hall?
Aye.
Councilman Huppert?
Aye.
Councilman Joe Walter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
Are you ready to drop? I'm moved to certify that the town council, the town of Christiansburg, meeting in closed meeting, in the best of each member's knowledge, discussed only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law, and only such matters as are identified in the resolution to enter into closed meeting.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Ms. Clerk, will you poll council, please?
Councilman Barber?
Aye.
Councilman Hall?
Aye.
Councilman Huppert?
Aye.
Councilman Joe Walter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
Councilman Van Huyschel?
Aye.
And that's unanimous. So we are out of closed session. And we'll reconvene open meeting. Any council action to be taken on anything discussed in closed session? Good luck, Mr. Town Manager.
Okay. I was going to ask to have the street committee meeting, it's an April third meeting. Uh, we've already called one, but we also need to discuss the parking on Sullivan Street because of the conditional use permit that was approved for the recreation facility there. And one of the conditions was the applicant shall provide an through traffic signage at no cost to town deemed appropriate by town street committee. So we need to meet and decide if that's appropriate, so it'll be part of the meeting. Next. Got a question about stormwater fees. Mr. Joe Walter? We had a briefing a couple, about a year ago, a DCR, for the trade rate, on stormwater fees. I'll let, give you a copy of their handout that they gave us to look over. It's, um, one of the questions was, Blacksburg had a discussion about it a couple of months ago. It was in the paper. Uh, they also, about a year or so ago, they started, had their first briefing on it. And there is, because all the new requirements were an MS4 designated area for stormwater management, which brings a lot of requirements on water quality and water quantity that we had to take care of. And several localities are implementing fees. Essentially, it's a tax on your property for impervious surface. And there's several ways to do it, and we haven't studied, you know, in, or looked into it to say, you know, we think this is the best way or, or that's the best way. But, um, it is one of the proposed fee, possible fee increases or fees for next year. Heard from some council members, they don't, aren't too happy about that at this time. But anyhow, that's, it's on the list as one of the possible fee, uh, fees for next year. But it would probably take us close to a year to implement it, so...
Is this something that, I mean, is it, and that was one of my questions, I was unsure, is this a temporary fee or is this, once it's said, it's in there?
It's a tax.
Well, right, nobody likes a tax.
Well, it depends upon...
Yeah, you could, you could say it is temporary, but it's an ongoing thing we're going to deal with from now on.
But you could say it is a one-time, is what you're saying.
I think you could.
It's going to be an improvement, we're going to have to continue to make it.
So...
Thank you, Barry.
Finance committee met Monday morning. We're going to schedule another meeting for this coming Monday morning at seven-thirty before the council work session on Tuesday at six o'clock. Val, will we let you know that we said we'd have the packets out to all of council sometime this week? But because of the finance committee meeting, we'll have another one. I'll let you know that, we said we'd have the packets out to all of council sometime this week, but because of the finance committee meeting, we'll have another one, they'll be coming out sometime Monday afternoon or Monday evening, so, I know it's a short time to look at, but. We'll probably have to make changes Monday morning, so. Also, I saw an email, um, lady was a little upset about the army playing army on a playground next to the armory, uh, Sunday morning.
On the armory property?
On the armory property, yes, that's the other thing I was gonna hand out, so.
Is that the national barque?
Yes.
Yeah, actually.
They're training.
And the children were on the playground, and the army guys were using. They were dropping bombs, and it's not the type that explained.
Yes.
Using pretty salty language from others, they had.
It's the armory property, our agreement with the armory is they have priority over the use of their property. Originally, the town bought that property, and, and concession to get an armory built in Christiansburg, they had to give it to the state, and that was back in the fifties. So, our agreement with them is they have priority use of their property, so.
Well, they had priority use of the building, that doesn't include the playground that's down there next to the property, is it?
That's part of their property.
Problem, problem, part of their property, but they have use of the armory. And they park their cars on the armory lot.
Barry, was this letter also to the CO, of the, of the unit down there?
I don't know if it went.
No, it did not, it came to me, and I forwarded it on by question to, for discussion tonight, and I understand, and, and it was, I don't, I don't know if any people were involved, and I had their names deep down into the email, and, and they were upset because there was one of the drill sergeants that was using a very profane statement to a lot of his soldiers. I think what I wanted to find out is, is that their property, if it is, then what we need to do is ask them if they're gonna be playing their games, maybe they need to put a notice to close that park, which they certainly have the right to do, you know, gonna be closed for training for, on, on a certain day, that's all I can.
I mean, even if, if you're talking about drill sergeants', uh, language, in the parking lot, when they line up, you gonna hear it out there, and that's within earshot of that park, so, I mean, if they're gonna do anything outside, uh, other than going to the vehicles, going out for lunch, doing whatever, uh, just, I would say let them know that, you know, we've been notified about it, council knows about it, and we encourage you to shut down the park if you're doing any type of outside activity, whether it's parade, or, you know, mop.
Has anybody talked to the company commanders?
I'd say.
Have you talked to the company commander, tell them, hey, this was what we hear, you know, and they'll shut it off right away.
I think we send a note and thank them for the continued use of that, when it's convenient for them, we've heard from one person, um, uh, to my understanding, we've heard from one person, I'd say, I mean, we are there at their, at their pleasure, and, and probably well we should be, and remember, you know, what, what, what the priority use of the property is, um, I, I mean.
I, I agree with what I've heard here, is if there's the shut it down when you're there, you're not gonna change their language regardless of what you do.
Council, council supports on that they shut down, and let me tell you something, uh, one email to, to their captain, or their lieutenant, or CO, and their, their staff, well, whatever type of sergeant they got down there, it's gonna be taken care of.
If you have that email, would you forward my email on down?
And also, meeting, meeting with the state representatives on the use of the armory and their agreement with them in May, uh, they're, they're doing a lot of things that we're supposed to be doing, maintenance and all, they've just taken it over, over the years, so, the agreement will probably be rewritten.
So, we wanna request that, is it, let me understand, are we gonna request?
I'll talk to the company commander.
I'll, I'll be glad you do.
I think they were gonna follow his email.
If they follow the email, at least they know where we stand, and then take the.
That's appropriate.
The recommendation would be, if you're gonna have outside drills, and you're gonna be dressed in camouflage and playing war games, maybe you ought to shut that thing down, if you're gonna be all over the place.
Well, we support them if they do, because beliefs, you're gonna get emails if it's shut down.
Yeah. I, uh, I think there could be a strong argument whether they could shut down that playground, but I'm not gonna argue that, but, uh.
They sure shut down the damn armory when they were gone.
Yeah, no, but we didn't ask their permission to put the playground there to begin with.
We just now put quite a substantial investment in that playground too, in the last six months.
I mean, we have a vested interest in the army, we are putting thirty thousand dollars a year into the army.
And they just got back, didn't they, Barry?
Yeah.
Want to be part of it, yes.
Welcome them back as well.
All right, no discussion, gonna send them an email? With a copy of the email from the lady that originated it, of course, she sent it to Mike so he could send it to, no, she sent it to Carol Lindstrom so she could send it to Meg Dorson, and Meg Dorson sent it to Mike, and I don't know who's running the town, whether it's Mike, Meg Dorson, or Carol Lindstrom.
Me personally, in formal communication, I guarantee you they'll take care of it.
I think so too. I would think that they would, uh, email the mayor, let him know their problems, or the town manager, but I guess making is next best thing to.
I'm sorry, your feelings got hurt, I shouldn't have dropped the damn thing forward, I should have hand-carried it, I don't blame you, I just opened my email, and there it was, guys.
Mayor, can I just ask?
Yes, sir.
Could you clarify your statement coming out of closed session with regard to direction to Randy? That is, that council determined that it was not going to make any further appointments because they weren't necessary at this time to the planning commission?
Yes, we can put that in the minutes, and we took no action on the, filling out the unexpired term.
Do we need to take action on that?
No, no.
No, I don't think so. It may be ammunition for somebody to use later.
But otherwise, Randy wouldn't gonna have anything in the minutes to help him.
All right.
Gotcha, okay.
Take care of that, Ms. Clerk. What else, Mr.?
It's all, sir.
Hales? All right, on the workshop that we had scheduled with Becky on communications and some talking points on the, uh, fee for services, Becky would like to move that to April seventeenth, and that's the night we're gonna meet at the aquatic center. And if we could come in there at six o'clock and let her do her thing for about forty-five minutes, then that'll give us plenty of time to get the others in for the resolutions.
Okay.
Okay? Is that all right? She said she could go ahead with it at the regular scheduled time, but it would help her in getting prepared, or what was she gonna do?
But good, it's, she's trying to time it with the release of RFP for.
That's right.
Uh, fee for service with the rescue squad, and she wants it to be closer to the time that's gonna go out, so.
The training sessions for, uh, tips on speaking to media, right?
Well, in general, basically, I'm gonna concentrate on the pros and cons of, of, uh, RFP.
I believe there's another name for it, isn't there?
Uh, CP, resource recovery.
There you go.
Passion. That's what it is.
Passion feeling. There you go.
All right, work session is March, March twenty-third, March twenty-seventh, work session on the budget. And I think we've got a finance committee meeting at seven thirty, is it next Thursday?
The twenty-sixth.
The twenty-sixth. And the work session is seven thirty-two in the morning?
Seven thirty in the morning.
Seven thirty in the morning for finance committee, but the work session will be March twenty-seventh, you wanna meet at seven?
I decided six.
Six. We set it at six.
Mayor's pushing that seven o'clock.
Mr. Mayor, or, or, remember to count, if I could bring something up, and I apologize, um, the, on the twenty-seventh, um, is there any way you all might be willing to meet at six fifteen or six thirty at the latest? There's a five-thirty meeting, it's in, uh, I mean, I could miss it, but, you know, frankly, the judge made the meeting for me, then I'm with you, I'll be coming up, it should be very long, but it starts at five-thirty.
Let's go seven, see accordingly you have.
I apologize, I, 'cause I was the one that kept saying six, six, and.